My wife says she's like a person, you know. She's got all this energy and happy year. You know, because I know when I leave work, it takes me ten minutes instead of two hours.
That's why I get up at 14:00 in the morning and I have to be on the roof by five.
Yeah. It's not a year like that. I've parked out a lot to get better. So it's been four months now.
Oh, good. Cool. Reacclimating?
Come on.
Hello. It's a big place. There's a lot of the good things about it, but time is short so far. Yeah, so far it's been positive.
Sounds all good. Ladies and gentlemen, please rise, please. Pledge your allegiance, please.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As you seen it, I'd call for the Board of Alderman Meeting for a March 14 special meeting. Roll call, please.
Alderman King, Alderman Stowe.
Here.
Alderman Tripp.
Here.
Alderman Bacaro.
Here.
Alderman Cassetti.
Here.
Alderman Philopon.
Here.
Alderman D'Aligas.
Here.
Alderman Yaman.
Here.
Alderman Rivers.
Here.
Alderman O'Brien.
Here.
Alderman Stewart.
Here.
Alderman Blackwell.
Here.
Twelve present, two absent.
Declare quorum. Consideration of previous minutes. Is there a motion to accept the previous minutes from February 13, 2018? Mr. Calibro and Mr. Cassetti seconded. All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Public session. Is anyone from the public that wishes to speak tonight? Yes, please come forward, ma'am. State your name and address for the record.
Mary Ann Swiatek.
Please come forward.
Mary Ann Swiatek. Mary Ann Swiatek, one of the beneficiaries of the estate of Casimir Machowski, 135 Hill Street.
Thank you. That's all you wanted to say, ma'am?
Oh, no.
Okay. Well, limit your comments to three minutes in public session. Your communication is a late communication, however, since this is a special meeting, it has not been put on the agenda for tonight, so you could maybe have a couple more minutes, but try to keep it like three, four, or five minutes tops, if that's okay?
Okay. I'm sorry. I thought I was speaking at the end and I just put a candy in my mouth.
That's okay.
So forgive me for that. Good evening, everyone. I do know many of you know me already from previous meetings about, let's see, in 2006 we came in with a, to this commission, with a beautiful 55 and over proposal. It was a plan. We had all the plans and we thought it would be a good fit for Ansonia. We had an experienced, viable developer who went through all the various commissions here, supplied everything, every revision, and still nothing. It wasn't passing. We even went through a judicial appeal that was in our favor. The fellow had health issues and had to walk away from it after a long period of time. So since then, it's been on the market, will continue to be on the market. Well, let me just jump in. I'm here because we do want the planning and zoning Aldermen to give us the go-ahead to reconsider our 16-plus acres on Hill Street, which is a large piece of property, to submit, be submitted to the state DEEP Open Space Land Acquisition Program. We did bring a proposal in 2000, let's see, 15, as I'm sure, as I say, some of you remember, and we got nowhere, no response or anything with it. But I had, bottom line, I had an eye-opener. I went into the 2008 Strategic Ansonia Conservation Plan and Economic Development Plan, and that was fantastic. And I, it's got much greater repercussions than just our land. I did not realize that Ansonia is 95 percent filled. There's only 5 percent of land that's already dedicated, occupied, or public space. 5 percent left. That's all. And when I read about, it said right in the policy there, it is a fantastic plan that discourage any property with steep slopes because of water issues, drainage, all that, which our builder, 55 and over, did answer and revised and was ready to do that. So we said if we submitted the best, what we thought was good for Ansonia, because we really care still about Ansonia, all the beneficiaries are natives. What else? And we were shot down on that. And now we want this reconsidered because I also found out that this land grant program is 75 percent full. So there's monies available because Ansonia is considered a distressed community of possibly a maximum of 75 percent reimbursement. That's a great deal. The property's at a very good price right now. And the plan said that because there's only 192 empty vacant acres in Ansonia, our 16 over 16 acres is 8 and 1/2 percent of that. That's one large piece of property. And after reading that plan, Ansonia doesn't need more housing, but they need more open space.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
We cannot take any action on this tonight, but maybe we can put it on our agenda for next month.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public that would like to speak tonight? Yes, please come forward and state your name for the record, please.
Hi, my name's Matthew McGowan. I live on 40 Winter Street, and I'm talking to you guys tonight about the fines related to snow removal and throwing snow into the street. The, a lot of amount of time for most people my age, I'm 25, I work 50 hours a week, a little bit better than minimum wage job. It's not enough time at 12 hours. If I'm working 50 hours a week and we have a snowstorm that lasts almost the whole day of my work, how are you guys going to expect me to go home at 12 o'clock at night, barely get some sleep, and then remove snow? Now, I'm not the only person, I keep on saying I a lot, I'm not the only person with this problem. This is probably a legitimate problem with most people in the North End and on the other side of town. It's probably the poorer part of town, so we gotta work a lot harder, you know, to make ends meet. On top of that, let's say we don't make this 12-hour deadline and a city official goes to our property and says, hey, you got snow in your yard, or snow on your sidewalk. We get hit with whatever the fine is, $250, something like that? Shit, that's like a freaking, I don't know, half my week's pay, if that, without taxes included and everything? How's that fair? Now, on top of all this, we get fined for throwing snow in the street. Have you guys ever been to the North End before? How many yards do you see going down Winter Street? How many yards do you see going down North State Street? Not a whole lot of yards. So now we're getting fined if we get caught for throwing snow, the only open space we have around us, which is the street. So I'm asking you, do what the rest of Connecticut, like major cities in Connecticut do, and New York City. Give us a 24-hour allotment to remove the snow from the sidewalks and lower the fines down by, I don't know, 20 percent? Not a whole lot to ask for there. And this is something that'll bring more people to the community. I've had friends who are like, hey, where's a great place to move to Connecticut? I say Ansonia, but there's a lot of problems right now in Ansonia. And when they hear about the fines that they're going to get hit with if they don't have time to remove snow, and other fines going on right now, it doesn't seem that attractive. Makes Bridgeport sound a lot better than Ansonia. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public that wishes to speak tonight? Yes, Mr. Marini?
Just for the purpose of public information, I just want to clarify. The ordinance that was adopted does indeed say 12 hours to clear snow from the sidewalks. However, in the event of overnight snow, it does provide up till noon that following day. So there is some leeway. Understandably, sometimes the snow stops, you know, overnight to nine o'clock, 10 o'clock, and if you count 12 hours, that does become pretty burdensome for a reasonable amount of time. So it does already account for some extra time for overnight snow.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, please come forward and state your name for the record, please, and your
My name is Karen Kennedy, 3 Glen Ridge Drive. And I'm here tonight and trying to get some information regarding the ordinance that was passed in October that's entitled Special Event Ordinance. It's something I was not aware of till this weekend, so I do have questions. I don't know if the questions can be answered tonight or not, but I think they are questions that need to be asked. So if I can, I'd like to start with my questions, and if anyone has answers, I'd appreciate it. My first question being, is a birthday party at my home considered a special event if I invite family and friends over 100 people? Because your ordinance stipulates 100 people or more, and it is considered a special event. Next question, if I take that same party and I move it to a rental facility, same 100 people or so, only family and friends, closed invitation, who's responsible for getting the application for the license to be processed? Is it me as the person running the party? Is it me as the renter who may go to a rental facility? Is it the owner of the rental facility who is responsible for getting the application completed, for the chief to then review, to have the license issued? That's first part of the question. Second part of, or I should say another question, what hours can we go down to the police station to do this application? I work. I work in Wallingford. I leave my house at 7:00 in the morning. I don't get home till 5:30 in the evening. The chief is long gone. Can I go there at night? Can I go there on a weekend? Do I have to see a special person? You're tying my hands if there is a time limit on when I can go to apply for this special license. That's another question. How does this special events license affect churches in our own city who have picnics, church picnics, on their own properties? Do they need a special events license? Who's responsible for getting that license? None of this is addressed in your ordinance, and I spent all day yesterday, because I got to work at home, I spent all day yesterday rereading the ordinance, rereading all of the minutes from the meetings, all of it, and also reading all of the minutes from the meetings since, trying to see if there's been other questions that have come up along these lines in regards to this ordinance. Now, like I said, I don't know if anybody's going to be able to answer the questions, but I think the questions need to be out there. I think we, as the public, need to know what we're supposed to do.
Sure. Thank you.
You know?
Mr. Marini?
Mr. President, this is a new ordinance for the city of Ansonia.
Correct.
It was certainly taken from other municipalities that have had success implementing the same ordinance. I think all of the questions are excellent, and I think there's a benefit, not just for the sake of those present to hear the answers, but for just the public at large. And I think it's very important to understand how the law works for anyone holding a special event. So I think to be efficient with this, what I'll do is we will take the questions, I'll basically reduce them into writing with an answer, communicating with our chief of police. For this meeting, we'll put the answers to those questions in these meeting minutes, so anyone reading this will have the answers with them. And we'll also publish them on the city website, and maybe even an annotation with the ordinance. That way, if there's a question, it'll be there. But I think it's, the questions are great, answers definitely deserve to be put out there, and if you'd like to leave your number, we could also talk one-on-one. But I think it would definitely be a good idea to answer the questions in writing.
Oh, the chief knows me very well. He also knows why I'm asking the questions. My father was lieutenant in this city. Thirty-some-odd years he worked for this city. And now, and I'll give you the reason why I'm asking these questions. I'm the rental agent for Warsaw Park. Warsaw Park was lambasted in the meeting in October by your own Alderman, Mr. Carroll, and by the chief. There were remarks made about me as the rental agent, basically the chief saying, I'm not there when the party, when the premises is being rented. I opened those doors, I closed those doors. I'm the first one in, I'm the first one out at every party that is held at Warsaw Park. And for him to say, no one's there anymore, that was derogatory to me. I leave there at 3:00 in the morning. I've been up there for everything that goes on. And also, for some of the comments that your own Alderman, Mr. Carroll, made in regards to some of the things that went on up there, he's wrong. I know what goes on up there. I know what I rent. There was never a several-day party that went to 3:00 AM every single night, because I wouldn't have been able to go to work if that was the case. So I just want people to be made aware of the fact that I was very much taken aback by some of those comments. And when this was brought to my attention on Sunday, that's when I decided I needed to come here. I've lived in this city for 60 years. It's the first time I've ever been in this office, ever. So I just think it'd be important that people understand, we may not know everything that goes on in here, but when they're brought to our attention, we have questions that deserve answers and not lies. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishes to speak tonight? Anyone? Yes, please come forward. Name and address for the record, please.
I'm Joe Kingston. I live at 23 Fairwood Drive. Today, I'm representing the Hilltop House. Through the 2016 election, we, as a city, voted to bond certain items out. One of the items bonded out, the item that was voted upon, was getting a new roof and a new siding for the Hilltop House. According to the Long Range Capital Improvement Plan, it was supposed to be done for the 2000, hold on, 2016, 2017 year. We have not heard anything back about the new roof, or when it's supposed to be done, or anything about it. I was wondering if anybody here knew anything about it?
Anyone? Rich, or anything about this? No?
No. It would be part of the scheduling for either probably Public Works at some point for doing roofs on buildings. The thing was just voted on in November of 16, so if it didn't get through in the first week, it'll probably be on the agenda for this year. I'm sure they're not going to allow the building to deteriorate in any form of bad.
We haven't heard anything, so we were curious on what was happening with it. Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Yes, ma'am, please come forward.
Veronica Cude, Wakeley Avenue. First, I'd like to compliment Public Works for the good job they've done on the streets this winter. My second, just to let you people know why I might be selling my property. My house increased $70,000. There is no way I can afford that. I've been downstairs now. Hopefully, it will come down considerably. But I mean, most of the houses on Wakeley Avenue, the two families, they're not owned or occupied anymore, and they're going to the dogs. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else from the public wish to speak tonight? Anyone else from the public? Mr. Papson?
I gave my name out already. David Papson, 16 Chester Street. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Board of Aldermen, and fellow Ansonia residents. I just want to take a moment to recognize something that hasn't necessarily gotten too much attention, but is well-deserving of it. I want to applaud my good friend and fellow, or not fellow, soon-to-be maybe fellow, Alderman Domenico Philopon, who chairs over the Technology Committee and their decision to transition towards going paperless. The committee recently held a vote to establish tablets as a replacement for the large paper packets that the Aldermen receive for these meetings. You know, as a member of the Board of Apportionment and Taxation, I can confirm that the wastefulness that some of these 100-plus-page packets, you know, can be. And then I'm reminded that there are other boards and other commissions that are also receiving these packets, so our paper trail is quite large. So instead of continuing to contribute to the tens of thousands of wasted sheets of paper that we find in our workflow, I think that the Technology Committee has made a strong step in the right direction towards being environmentally conscious for the city of Ansonia. I am strongly encouraging other boards, commissions, and city departments to consider this option as well. I believe that this decision will absolutely save money, save paper, and most importantly, help the environment. And I also want to recognize another subject matter. As a member of boat, and I'm working with the mayor, and I could see, and I think everyone can see, that the results in Ansonia are really showing, and Ansonia really is in a better condition now than it was four years ago. This is because of four years of stable taxes, you know, as a member of boat, I can attest to this, and these stable taxes have spurred economic growth. So I just want to, you know, take that minute to recognize, I know you probably get it a lot, but, to the mayor's team, the Board of Aldermen, all the other boards and commissions, thank you for the work that you do, and keep it up.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Last call. Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Hearing none, seeing none. Public session is closed. Public official session.
Good evening, President Bacaro, members of the Board of Aldermen, residents of the great city of Ansonia. I want to report that I have quit smoking. It's been three months and counting. You may have seen information about my walk and talk on Facebook. In effort to live healthier and to help with quitting smoking, I've been trying to take a daily walk, which includes looping around Main Street and East Main Street. I encourage residents in this, of this board, and members of this board. I know Joe Jowman was able to walk with me. To stop by, I will post the times of the walk on our city Facebook page. I also want our residents to feel free to join me. If you happen to see me walking out there and you have a few minutes to spare and want to feel healthier, please join me. I generally try to walk in the morning. I hear that the mayor and the first selectmen of our neighboring communities are willing to join me next week. Under the topic of health and wellness, we are well underway with our budget process, and we want our city to be fiscally healthy. So I am asking all departments to keep that in mind as they consider their budgets. I want to encourage our departments to look for savings and efficiencies. I also want to encourage interdepartment cross-training so that employees are able to be flexible wherever our taxpayers need them to be. Our first responsibility is to our residents of this city, and I want to make sure we are all working towards their best interests, which includes reducing government, footprint, and stabilizing the tax rate. Let's all keep that in mind as we work on remaining fiscally healthy. My budget is in a draft form right now and ready to be finalized for the next meeting. I know that together, the Finance Committee and Boat will be scheduling meetings in the next few weeks. We have a great team moving forward and working together for the good of the taxpayers. We have a lot of exciting things happening in Ansonia. We have a new restaurant, Empanadas, which opened its doors a week ago, serving Spanish food. They are located right here in downtown on Bridge Street. We also have a new cosmetology and barber training center coming to East Main. The company will be occupying 10,000 square feet of space in the former Mustang Sally's. The school is expected to enroll 150 students, and it will be open to the public for 50% reduced haircuts. That's an exciting development on East Main Street, which is seeing its own revival. We have Banco's and their renovations. The podiatry office has undergone renovations, and of course Fitzpatrick's had a million-dollar facelift. With the additional foot traffic from the residential apartments being constructed, this is an ideal location for the cosmetology and barber training facility. I'm looking forward to two new ribbon cuttings. Stanney Dairy, the yogurt manufacturer, is also busy completing and retrofitting of their leased facility on Howard Avenue. I know the Economic Development Office has been speaking to them about the possibility of a retail store as well. Rugpad is in the process of purchasing the 173,000 square feet of space that they are currently leasing, and I will be notifying this board regarding a tour of the facility. They are up and running, and I think it would be a great idea to get a firsthand look at their operation. You will hear more about economic development, from Economic Development Director regarding their other projects that are underway later on. I'm excited about our projects specifically in the downtown that are going to be underway shortly. You will be discussing 65 Main Street and the ATP Palmer Projects in executive session tonight, and we'll hear from Attorney Marini regarding both of those. The downtown will soon see even more activity. I want to inform this board that Executive Director Steve Nacano of the Ansonia Housing Authority received an award of the Veterans Affairs Supportive Housing, which is the VASH grant, okay, to place veterans. Congratulations to Steve and the AHA for their efforts in securing the funding. You know, AHA is only a, one of only a handful of communities in the state of Connecticut that received that grant. Finally, please join us for the Irish Flag Raising Ceremony at City Hall at 11:00 AM on Saturday to celebrate St. Patrick's Day and honoring my good friend Jack O'Hearn as mayor for the day. Remember to wear your green. Hope to see you all there. Please join us afterwards for corned beef and cabbage at the Copper City Bar and Grill. Oh, and one more last thing. Try to get there before me to ensure that there's plenty of food left. Thank you very much.
Corporation Council, Mr. Marini?
Any questions for the mayor?
Sorry, any questions for the mayor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Marini?
Mr. President, members of the board, our legal update. First off, I want to make sure everyone marks their calendars for Monday, April 9, 7:00. Here in the Board of Aldermen chambers, we will be hosting a Freedom of Information Workshop, and that's going to be open to public officials, to employees, and of course, all members of the public. We're going to be doing an overview of Connecticut's Freedom of Information Act. I think the main point of this particular workshop is a refresher for our public officials and our employees on the in-and-outs of the FOI law, the public meetings in particular, and of course, on what documents are accessible to the public. But of course, we also want to make sure the public understands, generally, what is FOI law, what are they entitled to, and what to expect with FOI in dealing with their government. We're going to have a special guest for this particular workshop. We're going to have Tom Hennick, who I've invited from the Connecticut Freedom of Information Commission. He's the educational officer, and so it's actually his job to go around the state performing workshops and seminars and kind of giving the latest word on what's happening at the FOI Commission. So he's done a wonderful job in the past, speaking locally. He's talked with the Valley Independent Sentinel on occasions, and so we're going to have- to have him right here in Antonia to present and ask questions. I'll be presenting from the city's end, and I've also invited the Valley Independent Sentinel to formulate some questions and to share some of their experience working with FOI. So that's going to be April 9, 7:00. Number two, we have some big items involving future businesses, as the mayor alluded to, or economic development, business development downtown, rather. 65 Main Street, which involves a purchase for the city of Antonia for the purpose of putting together a new police station, and of course ATP and Palmer, that's where the business takes place. We're looking to sell that property, Copper City Development, to pave the way for both new apartments and new commercial businesses downtown. We're going to be talking about that in executive session, and of course for the public, anything decided on in executive session gets voted on outside of executive session in the public forum. So if you wait till the end of executive session, you'll see whatever the Board of Aldermen agree on. I also want to give the Board an update on a resident issue on Jackson Street, 155, 157 Jackson Street. We have an issue involving flooding, an issue that has been unresolved for some time. Not really sure what the source of the flooding is, but it does appear to be causing property damage. It's been a vague headache for the resident for some time. So we're going to be meeting with George Logan and Linda Gentile on that next week, try to get to the bottom of it and kind of pave a way to a solution here. We've been successful in the past with some of these issues, even though they do sometimes tend to be private issues. We've been successful on O'Neill's Court and West High Highway, resolving, or at least partially resolving, some very long lasting matters, so we hope to be successful here. And then a new issue for the board, everyone's well aware of the opioid crisis that's been ravaging the state of Connecticut. In 2017 alone, there were 119 deaths attributable to drug overdoses in Connecticut. Now, you may have been reading the news, there's been a handful of Connecticut municipalities, cities and towns that have commenced lawsuits in one way or the other against pharmaceutical companies that manufacture these, basically, painkillers. And the allegation here that these towns are making is that these pharmaceutical companies, of which Purdue, Connecticut-based company is one of, these companies are engaging in deceptive marketing, that they are really downplaying the harms of the opioids, of the damage that they can do, and really playing up and exaggerating the benefits. And this is something that's not unique to Connecticut. This is actually something that's been in, sort of in process longer in other places in the United States, Tennessee being one particular state. And the towns in those states essentially looked for damages. So obviously, there's damage to the individuals that become addicted, whether it's death through overdose, or whether it's destructive path addiction, otherwise. But there's also damage to the municipalities, and specifically, you could take a look at the emergency service, the increased need for emergency service in the community. You could take a look at the crime rate and the increased need for police presence. So there are municipalities alleging those damages here in Connecticut. It's novel for Connecticut. There's some specialty law firms, or firms in Connecticut that are local firms that are making connections with specialty firms, say down in Tennessee where the litigation is advanced. And here in Connecticut, Danbury, Waterbury, Beacon Falls, New Haven, and Shelton, over 20 in all have been involved in this, beginning this process of litigation. So given that we're in the valley and understanding that in the valley alone, we seem to have disproportionate effect here, impact here from the opioid epidemic, I've been researching some opportunities. How do we get involved? Where do we get involved? How does it work? And the mayor's office and I will be talking to several of the firms that have been active on this in Connecticut. We're going to be reaching out to Derby and Seymour, two towns that are also affected that haven't engaged in any litigation at this point. And we're going to be reporting back to the board by next month's meeting on basically a plan of action, whether or not it makes sense, and if so, what direction we would advise, what we would recommend. And finally, not really legal, I think I'm going to ask our Public Works, Mike, to give an update on this a little later, but we've been working to get the built house at Colony Park open and back in action. I think that's a really significant development. It hasn't been opened in at least 20, 30 years, but that should be something to be, to be really happy about down at Colony Park, where there's more and more activity from the side of the building. That's the update I have.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Marini, from the Aldermen?
Any questions?
No. Thank you. Sheila O'Malley, Economic Development Director.
Thank you, President Vaccaro, members of the Board of Aldermen. Quite a few things going on, as the mayor indicated. Start with Antonia Copper and Brass. Had several conversations with EPA. You may have read in the Valley Indian, in the Connecticut Post, I believe. But they're going to be wrapping up their activities, we believe, this summer, early summer. They've already spent close to $2 million on that site, done a lot of work. Once EPA, I think I've said this before, but once EPA comes on a site, they find things and they'll continue to clean until they run out of money. And so they are doing that now, getting a lot of, a lot of work done. So that's Antonia Copper and Brass. Greg was kind enough to point out that our contractor for the armory was back out on site today, taking a look at the exterior of the building, and they're probably going to begin shortly back up on the scaffolding to start the exterior or finish the exterior renovations. And we'll talk more about the armory in next month's meeting as a kind of a, where are we going next with that building, and want to talk about some options for this board to consider. Let's see. ATP and Palmer, as Corporation Council Marini just mentioned, and the mayor did, you're going to hear more about that in executive session, but I just want you to know that the, the new owner, or hopefully new owner, was in the, in the building today, as a matter of fact, because he's putting together a cleanup plan for tiles and other material that has to be removed for remediation efforts. So he's already in the building. Public Works was kind enough to let him in, take a look around with his environmental consultant, because he's going to, that's the first step in getting, in getting the residential apartments being built out in that building. Let's see. Waukele Avenue, April 1 is the starting, but they've already started laying out, paying those, can speak more, laying out where the lines are.
Interining the trees down the line.
Interining the trees, Public Works and the contractor and DOT and VHB were out there looking at the tree line. And as a result, they're trimming that frontier, we're working things out, I hope, and they're going to be replacing poles. The poles are to accommodate the new utility, the stronger or more up-to-date utilities that are going in. Let's see, Prindle Avenue is 100%, the design is 100% complete, waiting on a third-party review. There's three reviews they have to go, the design has to go through, so they're waiting on the third-party review for that, and then hopefully we can get out to bid shortly on Prindle Avenue. Riverwalk Segment 8, back on track. They're still waiting for the bridge, so that should be a few more weeks, but then you'll see people out there, you'll see the company out there, Waters Construction Company, commence work again with Segment 8. Riverwalk Segments 3 and 4, we want to push that along as fast as we can because we have the money in place. We don't want anyone looking to take that money back, so we're going to get out there as soon as possible, get a bid out for the construction. Peck School, if you've been by there, is almost completely demolished. In fact, I think tomorrow morning, or actually, they probably finished this afternoon because they're going to be taking out the big crane tomorrow morning, so they're, they're done with the demolition. Hopefully, the grates will be available for people to take and hopefully, you know, you grab one before they're, before they're gone. Working on two grants, submitting two grants shortly. One is called the BAR Grant. It's Brownfield's area-wide revitalization grant, and we're hoping, we're hoping to get some money for the Antonia Copper and Brass area to, to map out potential infrastructure improvements, maybe perhaps a road, extending a road out to Route 8 corridor. So that grant will be submitted shortly. And then the second oppo, well, I was going to say opportunity, but the second grant is the Opportunity Zone Grant. And try to make this simple, but what happens is, for any interested developers who pay capital gains taxes, if they, if we, we have three census tracts, there are low-income census tracts, two of which we're prioritizing, one by Antonia Copper and Brass that runs along Antonia Copper and Brass, and one that's in our downtown area. And those are, those are census tracts that we are nominate, we hope to be nominated by the governor's office to be eligible for this Opportunity Zone Grant. So as I was saying, any, any developers who pay capital gains taxes, if, if you invest in, if we get these designations and you invest in these zones, then your unrealized gains, which you'll be reducing your taxes on the capital gains by using unrealized gains to fund the investments in these sections of the town. So, and once, if the investment, if you hold on to the investment for 10 years, you will have permanent tax cessation. So you won't have to pay any taxes if you keep the investment for 10 years, if we have these zones. So it's, it's a huge incentive for developers, and we're just keeping our fingers crossed. I really, really would like to see us get these designations. We're going to do everything we can to try and get them here, especially in the downtown and the Antonia Copper and Brass area, because they require, the Antonia Copper and Brass area requires so much investment to turn it around. So I think that's it for now. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Really? Nothing? No? Okay.
Greg Martin, Director of Nisticent Services.
Thank you, President Vaccaro, members of the board. I've got a few goodies that I've been working on and should be rolling out. Starting with, first and foremost, we've got a commitment for, we're bringing to Nolan Field, May 15, Tuesday, a college baseball game, Division 1. We're going to have Sacred Harry University versus University of Albany, and we're expecting this to be a special event that's going to have a tremendous potential draw traction, families, very, very family-friendly, who doesn't like baseball? Looking forward to this, and I guess 60 days to put all the nuts and bolts together with logistics, et cetera. Earth Day Cleanup is coming up also, it's our second one that we've done. Last year was our pilot program, we had about 25 participants, and this will be expanded to roughly, right now, we're looking around 75 to 100 volunteers have come forward to help out this year. Obviously, with more volunteers, we can really get spread out in a lot of direct, in a lot of directions, probably all the wards as well. And we're working on a, a large box retailer to donate needed reflective vests and the trash clause, so that will help reduce any overhead or any, any expenditure from the city. Working on a utility grant, this is a one that's been a little bit of a pep project for me. It's, it's a $10,000 utility grant, and what it's going to be used for is, a portion of it is going to go for the campus, if you will, of the Armory, Antonia Armory, that hill, when you're sitting at the stoplight there, looking up there at this nondescript, heavily overgrown with invasive trees, et cetera. That whole hillside will be re-landscaped over with cherry trees, vinca growing ivy, Canadian hemlocks, dogwood trees, and should have an answer on this probably by the next meeting as well. It's a three-part project grant. I've also been proposing that we, Elm Street, it's one of the most historic streets in the city, we've got about a dozen homes there that date back to the Revolutionary War. And it was called Elm Street because it was, it used to be lined with elm trees, and then we had the Dutch elm disease, and right now, between the property owners and the street itself, there's probably not a tree on Elm Street. This proposal would be to buy at least a dozen disease-resistant elm trees, and we would reinstall them along the sidewalks. And then we're going to also offer them up to anybody in town who wants to buy these, they're, they're very affordable, a six-foot elm tree for $65. So I'm hoping maybe we'll get a big rush from residents around town who want to drop a tree in. And the third leg of this grant would be used for, at Nolan Field, we've got a, we all, you know, know the, the hemlock hedge that runs from one corner down here to the football scoreboard, goes all the way down to pass the Little League field. I believe Boots Jarvis initiated this tree planting 60, 70 years ago, and these trees are 60, 70 feet high now. They've matured, they're like on their last legs. And I'm proposing a replanting of a second generation of hemlocks that we will drop in between all the existing ones, so that within five years, that whole hedge is going to be taken down. And it's just part of the beauty of Nolan Field, it also acts as a noise buffer to evade. So that will be the third part of the $10,000 grant. And then we've got flower plantings going on the granite walls, they'll be starting in April. That's the last leg of the grant we had last fall for some cleanup around town. They're going to be planting Russian sage and creeping phlox perennial flowers across the top of the wall. And also finalizing the East Main Street gateway cleanup. We rebuilt the wall, painted the handrails, and then Public Works is going to be going in and we're going to flower that up and put a tree in there as well. And lastly, April 9, Banco's will be having a press conference in front of their store, announcing details and band lineup for Rock this summer. So Banco's is taking over the former Rock the Valley, and it's going to be a part of a foundation that Banco's has put together. So more details on that to follow in a couple of weeks. That's it.
Any questions, Mr. Martin? Thank you. Thank you, Greg. Mr. Bishara, Controller.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Not too much to report. We're continuing to work on the budget with the mayor, accumulating data, information to try to have as much information from where we go to presentation. I hope this year is to streamline the process. Really like to bring the Finance Committee and the Boat Committee together and have one presentation by the departments, have everybody listen to it, and basically, two groups working together create their own individual budgets, but hopefully streamlining the amount of hours and time it takes to, for everybody involved to get through with it. This month, we've bonded for the Riverside Demolition. We ended up bonding out about $3.1 million for over a 15-year period for about 3.5%. Those are taxable bonds because of the nature of the beast over there. We spent probably about $4.2 million overall. It was $5.2 originally allocated, but over the years, because it's taken about eight years, we paid down on it, so we ended up final borrowing of $3.1 million at three and a half over 15. We also borrowed $5.2 million, which is the non-police section of the 2016 referendum. We've already spent about $2.4 of that, and the intent is spend the bulk of that over the course of the next 12 months. And so those two pieces are in play, and I have actual numbers to, for budgetary purposes going forward. And the last piece of the puzzle that we really haven't done anything with yet is the $12 million towards the police station. This Friday, I'll be receiving $2 million in bands, which bond the anticipation notes. That, what do we get, 1.5% I believe approximately, for a 12-month note on the band process. And we've spent just about all of that, so it'll be basically a reimbursement for what we spent on the original purchase allocation piece of this. So as we move forward and that becomes a reality, we'll look at borrowing additional monies to defund the renovation as it goes forward. Other than that, I don't know if that's all I've done.
Questions, Mr. Bishara? Thank you. Thank you, Richard. Chief Hale?
Mr. President, good evening. I want to start by thanking Greg Martin for offering a lesson in horticulture and landscaping. There's some plants there I never heard of, so. So we've had a run of snowstorms, this most recent one being the... Um, so we've had a run of snowstorms, uh, this most recent one being the least of the three last week. Um, forecast had changed in the discussions with Mayor Michael D'Alessio, decisions made to have a parking ban, which is a huge endeavor for Long Island in terms of enforcing that. Just want to thank the public because they really responded this time around. It's, it puts a lot of people at a disadvantage and inconvenience, a lot of work for police officers, but in the end it helps Public Works really get their job done and get their streets open, perfect, perfect. So again, I thought we had a great response. We towed very few cars, I believe we issued too many tickets. There was a question earlier on the, um, snow removal and if you remember, that was, that was always in, in the charter, always in the ordinances for snow removal and it actually used to be six hours. And I think this, uh, ordinance actually made it easier for the public. And I can tell you, you know, 12 hours and one minute after the storm ends, we don't have 5,500 cops knocking on doors. You know, I don't make, make light of this, but this is really a guideline to, to, to get people to, to recognize this. And we have seen in the past, there are days and days where, where ice and snow would build up on sidewalks. So, you know, I don't want to say it's not enforceable, but we're, we try to be reasonable about this. And again, the point of it's, it's, uh, you have until noon of the next day if it stops overnight or what have you. Again, we're trying to be reasonable. We actually, I think, made it easier, uh, for the public. So this isn't something that, that is new. In terms of plowing into the street, that has been a real concern for both the Police Department and Public Works in years gone by. We've had some real issues with that. So again, that is not done to punish any citizen or resident, it's done to make the streets safer. And again, Public Works would come through and clean the street and then contractors would come into driveways and push it back out on the street. And maybe Public Works has gone home for the night or, or what have you, and then we have a, an icing issue and it just be, creates a whole series of events that really is unnecessary. So again, these aren't punitive, these are meant to make the streets as safe and as open as, as quickly as we can. Winter parking ends, the winter parking rules end March 35th, uh, March 31st, which means that winter, of course, has to end by March 11th, so we're all waiting for that. And, and in terms of, uh, Ms. Kennedy, which you brought up earlier, um, perhaps what I'm going to, I think we should do is have a meeting with the, the, uh, membership representatives of the clubs that we had spoken on, just get on the same page. The spirit of this ordinance was not aimed at, that, uh, private birthday parties or, or, you know, for whoever, bridal showers, there were certain, certain events that caused a drain on resources for the Police Department and Arms and the lesser-greedy Department. So there was, there was a spirit behind that. Uh, in terms of access to the forums, right now, I believe Darlene is still working on our website, but we're, our goal is to get, uh, the bingo and raffle forums are going online so people can download and send them in that way. Our plan is to do the same thing with, with these forums as well. In addition, we'll, if they're not there already, they'll be out in the lobby of the Police Department so somebody can come in, um, in time and get them. Uh, a lot of this can be done by email, we don't have to, you don't have to come in at a specific 2:00 in the afternoon to meet with anybody. Um, if that's the case, they will make an arrangement to, to meet with somebody that, you know, that's more convenient. Um, I certainly don't have to be there for this to happen. And then finally, in, in terms of what you, you mentioned, uh, there was no, you know, I remember the meetings, uh, there was no offense, offense intended. If you took it that way, no, apologies. I, you know, I meant no offense when we made these, uh, when we had these meetings, but there've been some real frustrating incidents in general throughout the city in the past year or two. Uh, that where we're going to a party with hundreds of people that we had no awareness of, and bringing police officers from other communities. And so the goal of this is to, just to know what's going on. We can anticipate, there's a party here, there's a party at Falcon Hall or, or, or South Park or St. Sebastian's or what have you, so we're aware of it and we have some control. We're not trying to put more, um, what we are trying to do is make sure the management of the clubs are aware of what's going on because I think in general, there may be some clubs that aren't really quite aware of who they're renting to or, or what's going on there. So I think we want to all be on the same page. So, uh, you know, points well taken, we had a, uh, questions the other day from another, uh, club representative. So I think the best thing to do is perhaps have a meeting, sit down and then go through it and make sure everybody's on the same page, just to understand the spirit of, of why we did what we did. Again, is that aimed at a party at 2:00 in the afternoon at your house? It's not causing a disturbance or, or creating an issue for, for neighbors. So, so again, that's, that's why we did that. Um, I think that's it.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for Chief Hale? Mr. Tripp?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Chief, good evening, sir. Uh, just to go back to you, we've had this conversation before, the number one complaint that I hear from my residents in San Antonio where they're speeding, and I'll just use it for instance, somebody coming out of Seaboard and they come down either, uh, Woodbridge Avenue, Prospect Street or Beaver Street to get to wherever they're going to go. Um, case in point, apparently came to my attention that we, Monday, there was a car accident on Woodbridge Avenue. I don't, I can't get the details on it that you would have, but I was just wondering if that might draw some attention to Woodbridge Avenue and what's going on on Woodbridge Avenue.
If asked, uh, what's the problem we can have? If others, uh, an accident, uh, pretty significant. Um, winter kind of confines what we can do in terms of, of speed control, but, uh, absent that, the officers are where we discuss. We try to move around, where we enforce this, we can, uh, look on Rook Cliff Street the other day and, and Holbrook Street as well, up there watching destruction, Tech School, and these cars are flying. And, you know, then I can go to Elm Street, I look out the window and I see it every day, Blaski Highway, you've got a car lasting, I think, 70 miles an hour, Blaski Highway, so, um, not to diminish, but it, it is, it's everywhere. It's not just, you know, it's on, obviously, but this is certainly a concern. So, um, Speed Trailer won't go off again until springtime. Uh, we can't, the streets, it really just doesn't work well, so we'll get that back out. Supervisor's meeting again in the morning, so I'll bring up your concerns again on Beaver and Woodbridge and Prospect and, and, uh, the other streets that get our attention.
So if this came down to my request that the Speed Trailer would need to be moved in?
Yes, top of the list.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any questions for the Chief? Thank you, Chief Hale. Director of Public Works, Mr. D'Alessio.
Good evening, Mr. President, Board of Almenon. I want to keep it brief. I've talked to Mr. Report this month, except for the snow. Um, we all know we had a bunch of little storms. We had like six storms this past March, um, February into March. Sewer backups, we had, um, four or five sewer backups this month. The guy's been out grinding brush, we, a lot of trees fell down his last storm. Between the snow and the trees, we were out there cutting trees all over town, wires down. We must have about 15 loads of brush that were up there chipping it, getting rid of it, cleaning the trees with brush. We started bulk this month on top of all of it. So we're pick, we're snow plowing, picking up brush and we're picking up bulk also. So it's been a busy month for Public Works. We're out filling potholes wherever we see them, residents call in, we take care of it. I mean, any one of you guys see a pothole, call Public Works or myself, sometimes you miss them. There's some big ones out there, there's some trenches and, uh, we've been contending with it. As soon as the asphalt comes out, we'll be taking care of a lot of the roads. Stop signs have been knocked down, mailboxes knocked down. Uh, the snow's been heavy as you're driving down the road. Snow's flying, it's taken down some of the mailboxes that have been rotted, so we've been taking care of the mailboxes for the residents. Cleaning storm drains, we're still on that. So we got a cruise, the guys have been really working on different parts, trying to get a lot of it done before the spring hits, uh, so we can get most of it taken care of a little earlier this year. So we're jumping between snowstorms and washing out the trucks and that's just about it for this month. Worked on my budget, got the budget just about done, working with Richie on that. Well, Colony Park, we're getting that concession stand open, the power is in. Uh, I ordered a roof to be put on, the roof should be done this week if it doesn't snow again. You know, we cleaned out the inside, so it's spotless. So as soon as the roof goes on, we're going to go inside, paint it, put some lights, put a couple of new windows. I think it'll be a good thing for Colony Park for the soccer games and just to brighten up that area again. It's been like 40 years since that's been open. And then when I was a kid, I used to, that was our hangout, you know? We had, we had a little slide that went into the water, maybe we can dredge it out and clean it up and come back like the old days. That was a really busy, busy park at one time. So hopefully this will work, uh, that concession stand being open, more people to go there and hopefully soccer and whoever else can utilize it. And that's about it.
Any questions for Mr. D'Alessio? Yes, Mr. O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. D'Alessio. The, um, any luck with the water at that, uh, fieldhouse?
Yes, the water company's coming out, there's a water line in there, it's an old one. I'm, I'm hoping, uh, happening, the water company's coming, we're going to crack the, the drain. Hopefully when it comes in, it, it, it works. If it does, we're going to put a, a cap on, a meter, we'll have water.
All right.
There's also a sewer line in there, an old sewer line. What we're going to do is we're going to take the truck up there, we're going to try to clean it, see if we can get up to this, up to the storm drain with it. If it, if it works, that'll be hooked up, so we'll have water. There's enough power in there to have a hot water heater too, we got to put a 200 amp service, so everybody's got to be electric. You'll have a nice little hot water heater, electric, you wash your hands, have a tree base sink. Well, after that, whatever you guys need, you'll have to work on, but at least the building will be up and running, roof, uh, windows, you'll have electric. Um, and if we keep it open towards the, till fall, we'll put an electric heater in there to keep it heated. But I think it'll be a good thing.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Joe?
I apologize in the background to my voice, but.
It's all right.
Now, uh, Nelligan, uh, as baseball's getting ready to open, uh, next month and softball, have we had any progress with Nelligan or?
Yeah, that was on our discussion this morning. The dugouts, that's our number one concern right now. We're going to put a corrugated roof over the dugouts to keep the sun off the kids. And I think we're going to put a, either a concrete pad underneath where, where they're sitting, or even maybe do asphalt. I'm going to go up there, I think asphalt might be the cheaper way out, put a frame around the dugout, put the asphalt in there and put a roof over the top. If we get the dugouts taken care of, we'll be good. I mean, the water situation.
Uh, it needs to get scoped.
It's not as bad as it was, um, but, you know, and we had a lot of rain this year. And I was up there, the millage we put in the driveway, helped a lot. Maybe they found a root, maybe the root opened up, um, I'm hoping it's a little drier this season. That, we don't have the money or where to work on that drainage this year, but it's an issue we'll work on. But at least the dugouts will be taken care of and.
When you do get out there, can you just check on the, on fences in the back? Cause some of those have popped open and a lot of the kids like.
Yeah, the other needs, yeah. We, we, we need new fences for a lot of the parks in town, believe it or not, they're old. Um, we could tie it down, that's, that's when the mowers going around and getting caught on the fence line. You know, we got to do more weed whacking and more, uh, weed control around the fence line so we're not going close with the mowers, you know? You've got three guys out there cutting grass and there's a lot, a lot of lawns that cuss over there, you know, they whack them and they bend them out, but.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Um, when are we going to get that, uh, water line in the, the fieldhouse? Um, is it going to be like spring or?
The water line for what, for, uh, Colony?
For the, um.
Oh, for the washing machine downstairs?
Yeah.
That, that'll be soon. I was, I was out there looking. It'll, that's an easy fix.
Yeah, and then on the inside there, I told you about the pipe that's going upstairs?
Oh, for the leak?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's the showers upstairs that we're actually working on right now.
Okay.
That's supposed to be taken care of this year. Uh, we got a price on doing it, we got a grant for that, the showers, um, we just got to get going on it. You know, Don Smith was out there, it's all engineered. Them two shower heads are coming out, we're going to put two new towers in, it's got to be recemented and, uh, it's an old drain, it's, it does leak around where you guys are, but maybe I can put something over until, but the drainage for the washer, washer's not a problem.
Okay.
That's easy. Okay. Yep.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay.
Merrick Sette?
Yes, in my speech, I forgot to mention something, it's sort of, uh, fantastic news. I want to congratulate Walderman Josh Schuer. He has been promoted to be a professor at Sacred Heart University and I think he deserves a round of applause.
Sorry I was late earlier, I was celebrating.
Committee reports. Finance Committee, we need a motion to pay all bills that are promptly accurate and correct. Most members of Castle Light, the second lady, Mr. Cassetti, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Arms Committee? Um, Mr. Hion?
I'd like to deliver a report for tonight.
Thank you.
Um, we had 275 calls last month. Uh, had the month been 30 or 31 days, we probably would have rolled in the 300 mark yet more. So it's been very busy, uh, last couple of months. Various different type calls. We also, with our spike and call line and stuff, we really had a, uh, some pretty good months with our collections. Last month, uh, the revenue generated was $77,295. Um, so we're working with our commission, uh, we've put our final budget in, I met with the Finance Department, uh, regarding our budget, and then we're looking to get a meeting with the, uh, Salary Committee to deal with some of the other issues or separate, uh, rates and down restrictions that we've been talking about. Uh, but we're working through that with our commission and then we're working with the, uh, Salary Committee, you know, on the side of the bus. So other than that, um, pretty much all in progress. Our ambulance that went out for significant repairs back in September, uh, later than again, um, has gotten back to dealer in Long Island and we expect it back within a couple of weeks. So, um, we should have that back and then I'll be getting that back in service. All the vehicles, uh, are up for D and P inspection as well as department health inspection, uh, so we'll be working on that by the end of the month. Uh, I'm glad Walderman, uh, we're working, but, um, I appreciate the support.
Any questions for Chief Hion? Thank you, Jared. Oh, Mr. Delibro?
Uh, it's not a question, I just wanted to comment about arms. We're going to vote to accept.
Yes, both groups accept your arms report? Any sort of motion? Mr. O'Brien, second lady, Mr. Schuer, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Delibro.
Uh, yes, um, on Sunday night, I had a, uh, medical at my house. And, uh, when the call went into 911, uh, Ryan Hunt happened to be in the area. And when he heard it was a 19-year-old that was unconscious, he took it upon himself to respond to my house, to, uh, assist in any way he could. Matter of fact, I was still on the phone with the dispatcher when he arrived. Chief Hale, your officers and the paramedics and the EMT that also responded showed the most utmost professionalism and they should be, uh, given a round of applause for the work that they do that sometimes we don't appreciate. It's tough on a senior kid.
Um, WPCA, Mr. Stowe, anything to report tonight?
Uh, yes, there's a WPCA meeting tomorrow night at 7:00. It's the first one we've had in a couple, a couple of months due to weather. Um, we do have something to mention about, uh, Public Works. I went to the Public Works meeting on Monday and there's been discussions month after month about, uh, some forming we have that are, uh, non-union, that have been looking for a, a wage increase for about, uh, four years now. Um, the commission that was there, uh, unanimously was asked for us to have a Salary Committee meeting. I don't know who's resp, oh, I know who's the Salary Committee Chairman, but I don't know exactly who, who is going to organize that. Um, is anyone interested in telling me what they're, what they would like to do? Um, I don't know, I mean, does Mr. Bishara have to go to the next Public Works meeting or can Salary, uh, handle this or what's, what can go on here?
I would suggest that we get, uh, all the parties involved in one room so that we can finalize.
And who are, who are those, all, all those parties?
Well, it's all going to be between the Public Works Commission and HR and Finance, I mean, Salary Committee, we're all involved in that.
So you're, I, I assume that the way you stepped up to the plate, Richie, that, uh, you can have, uh, Mr. D'Alessio, Ovi, wherever they need the areas. You and him can organize a meeting with Public Works?
Well, I'm not an organizer, I'm a board member here, so.
Well, I'm just, who needs to be there?
Ultimately, though, it's not just salaries and that kind of is part of the problem. It's a whole document that needs to be updated and it's got a lot of things in it.
Well, in the discussion, I, I, cause I'm not a commissioner on that, I just, I, I'm a subcommittee chair, chair, and I go to the meetings every, every, uh, month if it's at all possible and, you know, sometimes I represent them in, on occasion. And, you know, sometimes I represent them on occasion. And, uh, Mr. DeLassio, wasn't it mentioned at that meeting that some of the, there was issues of benefits, I believe, that need to be, which I think Richie was talking about, which need to be resolved, but that doesn't mean that they can't have, if that doesn't get resolved, that they, that has to interfere with them getting a raise. Is that correct?
Right.
That was discussed. That's what they believe. That's what the commissioners believe, and that's what the foreman believes. So, I mean, I don't think that the benefits have to be cleared up right away. I think that can be an ongoing process, but the, they would like a raise. And, you know, I'm just gonna say how I feel about this. You know, when you wait four years and you haven't had a raise, and you have to get up on weekends, holidays, you know, people who work in buildings are cool in the summertime, warm in the wintertime, they're dry when it rains, they don't have to use suntan lotion, get my drift, they work hard. And we've met, and, you know, something I don't know if the newer Aldermen know, there was a referendum, I believe, not a referendum, a resolution that was passed that there would be review of employees before they got a raise. Is that right?
Yes.
I'm just the new guy. When you go, whoever's on salary, you need to ask for a review, a yearly review, because that was actually passed by this board, a different group, but it's passed, and it's regulations that you're supposed to follow. So when you go to hire somebody next time, you need to see, not that these people weren't qualified, you know, they probably had wonderful reviews, but you guys probably never looked at it because you didn't know about it. Okay. So Mike and Rich are gonna organize a sit, get together, so that when I go to their meeting next month, I'm not listening to that anymore?
I'm the facilitator of numbers.
I know you are.
For this, I am not the organizer of the meeting. This is an HR function. Probably should come between HR and salary, ultimately, to start the process. And I can help with the numbering and the effective cost and the benefit piece. I can introduce the opinions of him and his membership, but I believe it's administrative function.
And you need, Mr. Philippone needs to be part of this process? He's the chairman of salary? I mean, does the salary have to be?
Mr. Stowe, this will be, this will be handled. We just move on with the agenda. This will be handled. You can bring it up in the new business.
Laurie, please.
No, Mr. Stowe, you made your point. It will be handled. Okay?
Mr. President.
We will arrange, we will arrange, Mr. Stowe.
Mr. President.
Mr. Stowe, let's not get into it.
It is the responsibility of the Board of Aldermen to pass all legislation
And it will be handled. Thank you. It will be handled. Let's move on.
Mr. President, point of order. This order would like to know what it'll be handled means.
We will schedule a salary committee meeting, I'm sure, Mr. Philippone is on us.
Thank you. That's all I need to hear.
It will be handled, Mr. Tripp. Thank you.
Saying that salary committee chair will be charged with that, a lot more definitive than it'll be handled. By whom, where, how, what? Thank you.
Well, one thing is, Mr. Recaro, I...
Mr. Stowe, we're gonna move on. I'm sorry. Mr. Stowe.
Once I die, I will be here next month, and the more you escalate what a guy like me does not help you, it makes matters worse. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Yes.
For the last four years, who's been the chairman of the Finance Committee?
Mr. Stowe was last year. Three years ago, I was.
This year, right now, has been an ongoing issue for four or five years.
And that's why I'm showing, that's why I'm agitated.
That's right.
And that's why it seems like I'm agitated, because this has been going on more than long enough. Just go tell them you're not gonna give them a raise. I don't care.
Mr. Stowe, we won't, we won't resolve it for the fourth time. Thank you. Fire committee reports. Mr. Schuer?
Uh, let's see. There were 39 calls during the month of February, highlighted by or lowlighted by, five motor vehicle assists, three vehicle fires, 11 structure fires, four electrical hazards, and one water leak. And additionally, the fire marshal conducted three investigations.
Thank you. Most accept that report? Mr. Delibro, seconded by Mr. Philippone. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Municipal report, any other committee reports tonight? Mr. Cassetti?
Yeah, we got a housing authority report. On February 20th, they moved forward with some resolutions. We spoke about earlier concerning smoke-free policies. They would be enforced in Monsignor Hines and John J. Stevens apartments, and James J. O'Donnell apartments. Also, on the 21st, they had a meeting that included the closing of the property on 11 May Street. That was in earlier discussions that we've had. It was scheduled for the end of February, which has been concluded now. There's a resolution for the CMAP, which is the Section 8 Management Assistance Program. For 2018 is included with your board packages if you, it's voluminous, so if you feel like perusing it. Also, at that meeting, it was concerned, Chairman Pinto stated that there was no financials for that month, and due to the accountants closing the books for that year, or previous year. That's attached in the packet are the profit and loss sheets of that month. Okay? That's it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Municipal reports. Board of Apportment and Taxation Recommendations. Is there a motion to accept the municipal budget reports from both? Is there a motion? Mr. Cassetti?
Yes, sir.
Seconded by Mr. Rivers, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Land Use Department report. Anyone like to make a motion to accept that, Land Use Department report?
Make a motion.
Mr. Cassetti, seconded by Mr. Castleitis, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Tax collector report and request for refund. Mr. Castleitis?
Make a motion to accept the tax collectors' report and request for refunds in the amount of $3,553.92, if I'm correct.
Seconded by Mr. Schuer. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Accidents and claims. Mr. Castleitis, please.
Uh, make a motion to revert a corporation counsel for accidents and claims.
Sir, second. Mr. Yaman, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Communications. Communication number one, from Lois Ammarazzi, requesting space in the police department to be built at 65 Main Street for, to house historical articles and artifacts.
Motion table, so, uh, is it wide?
Motion to table. Is there a second on that? Seconded by Mr. Philippone. Any discussion? All in favor? Say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carried. Communication number two, it's from Chief Hale. It's regarding naming Railroad Avenue in name, in the honor of Chief Daniel Hayes Drive. Chief, you want to expound on this once more, or?
Yes, as I mentioned last month, in my letter, Chief Hayes was shot in the line of duty on December 23rd, 1880, in or in front of what is now 158 Main Street, which is near Railroad Avenue. I mean, he was only the second police officer ever killed in the line of duty in Connecticut, and died four days later. Quite a bit of history, legal history in terms of connected with this case, I believe, it's a charge that's still being used in courtrooms today throughout Connecticut. So our recommendation, and this is really driven by a couple of our patrolmen that pushed this forward, but we'd like to see Rello Allen remain Chief Daniel Hayes Drive. It makes sense to us. The number was, one, there are no addresses on Rello Avenue at this point, so there would be no impact on any businesses. And secondly, to me, it's the right thing to do, it's lawful to do. And so we'd also like to have a working word of a plaque that would be elected to the New Avenue or what have you, detail briefly what happened, uh, all those years ago. That's our request.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Tripp?
Motion to change the name of Railroad Avenue to Chief Daniel Hayes Drive.
Aye.
Mr. Castleitis, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
There's several appointments for this evening. Mr. Rivers?
Yes, um, I make a motion to put David...
DiVincenzo.
Yes.
DiVincenzo.
DiVincenzo, 13 Woodward Avenue, Antonia, Connecticut, for the Board of Public Works, a two-year term. And I make a motion for the Board of...
Wait, wait, we need a second on the, um, Mr. Stowe, did you have your hand up?
Second.
Mr. Stowe, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Rivers, continue, please.
Yes, and I make a motion to reappoint Ann Lynch, 15, Beechwood Drive, Antonia, Connecticut, and Steve Sobleski, 93, Prospect, Antonia, Connecticut, for a two-year term on the recommission.
Thank you. Motion, seconded by Mr. Castleitis, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Rivers.
Thank you.
Uh, there's no resolutions, no ordinances, new business. Mr. Cassetti, please.
Just a little notation, that on March 21st, my mother will be turning 92 years old. I don't know if anybody here would like to join me in wishing her a happy birthday.
Thank you. Any other new business? Any old business? Mr. Philippone, thank you.
I have a report that we got money for the tablets. Hopefully, I'm gonna make a motion to get a headcount for anybody that would like to have one. It's gonna be around $200 a pop. And Alderman Castleitis, you brought up a good point, even if you don't use it, it's great to just have them for the Aldermen that come in the future. We can have them ready, we don't have to buy them again. So I make a motion to take a headcount for anybody that would like to have a tablet.
Seconded by Mr. Cassetti?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Give your hand count.
Can I have a discussion?
Sure.
Before you pass it. Um, I think it's wonderful that somebody has donated these, is that right?
Uh, yes.
It's a donation? Is that correct?
It is not a donation.
Oh, what is it? I thought, cause this is how, I was informed, there was a donation of somebody who wanted to remain in. And I says, you know, I have a lot of, a lot of people in my ward ask a lot of questions.
Right, right.
How you all know one of them? You should sit next to me.
It's not, it's not a donation. I, I said that.
I volunteered for such a worthy cause to take about $3,000 from one of my budget lines and buy the Aldermen's, because I feel strongly that it's gonna save money for the city in the long run.
So...
So it'll be a city funded item.
So it's a city funded item, okay. And, uh, and people, if they want paper, can have paper? That's the way it was left last year?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
Account, my account.
So whoever would like a tablet...
So we're gonna have a vote now.
Yeah, I got this floor, Mr. Stowe, thank you. Whoever would like a tablet, please raise your hand.
So...
One. Charlie, you lift your hands up. One, two, three.
So, um, four.
Dave Blackwell.
Dave Blackwell.
Okay.
Thank you. Final count was 13?
Well, the suggestion was to go ahead and get 14, so that we don't have to make it for a future purchase.
Mr. Bishara, you want to be heard on that? Do we want to order?
That's the board's pleasure, I'll do what you want me to do.
Okay, let's...
That was part of his, I believe it was part of his...
Laurie, Laurie, on the record, I would, I do not vote, I, I'm going with the program, but I don't vote, support spending the money. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you.
I don't support that.
Brown Clerk.
So it is my understanding we're going to go paperless, so I don't have to make any cost?
No, I want paper.
Paper, too.
Then you're just eating your coffee.
Well, if you could pick out the items, like, here's one right here. Here's one right here. This financial information of City of Antonia, February, I don't want that on a tablet. I want this in papers, like, cause I could put it in my file cabinet and it makes it easily accessible.
Okay, so two for paper? Thank you. All right.
I could have Mr. Philippone maybe stop by one day and we'll figure out exactly what we wanted to do.
Sure. I'd like to thank the Technology Commission for getting this done. It's been a few years we've been talking about this. Thank you. Mr. Schuer, yes?
I think the suggestion, so, pretty close to the meeting, we always get, we're always called the packet, email, the packet, but stuff always trickles in afterwards, before the meeting, late communications and whatever. It suggests that we, after the meeting is over, a final email comes out with the, basically, a final packet over, which encapsulates any of that new stuff that comes in there, so that there's one, one final email per month that has everything that we covered in the meeting.
The summer.
You know what I'm saying? So if there's like four late communications that come in after the packet comes out, that they all get added in, and then the second email goes out.
We'll try to, we'll try to accommodate that. It's a good point. I know what you mean. Thank you.
Do a copy, do a copy.
Do my best. Mr. Cassetti?
Also, Mr. Philippone would be willing to help anybody that needs any assistance and this technical advance.
As was Mr. Rivers. Thank you. Thank you.
Of course.
Sheila, please.
Me too.
And Sheila Mallon.
If anybody has any questions or wants help setting up.
You can help me while I'm on my excavator. That'll work out beautiful. I already got my hands all tied up, but I just need this, this help with this one little thing. Hey, thank you.
Mr. Any other old business tonight?
Uh, Mr. President.
Yeah.
Before we move on from this, if I may, Charlie?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Before we move on from the tablet, I just want to add, on a night when the Board of Education is still waiting for their special education reimbursement from the City of Antonia, on a night when the Board of Education is still waiting for their Alliance Grants Funds, which funnel through the City of Antonia, they still have not seen that money yet, the Board of Aldermen can award themselves tablets. Something to me personally seemed wrong with that. I just want that on the public record, that's all I have to say.
Noted. Yes, Mr. Bishara, please.
I think that was kind of shot at me.
Mr. Bishara, I did not use your name, and I know it's not you. You're not the one making the decision in this building.
Mr. Tripp, he had the floor. Thank you.
Let me understand here. The $958,000 that we've received so far for special education has already been credited to the 702 line item. Lisa Jones communicated through email within the last couple of days that that's been made, and she's gonna be making the correct, or the adjustment journal entries on her side for that. Special education, or, check that. The Alliance District money that we've received so far, which is five or $600,000, has been already transferred back in January, I believe, to the, to the grant line items, which is where it ultimately lands for Eileen Eamon to distribute. And any monies we received for that has been there. What hasn't been done, the October 1 money from ECS, which was delivered prior to the budget resolution from the state, that which contradicted what was actually happening with ECS money. Still trying to get determination from the State Board of Ed, the State Department of Education, and the Board of Education. Am I supposed to give them some of that money, or is the state gonna give through a regular Alliance District grant, which has been done in the past? I'm still trying to get understanding, as is the Board of Ed. They just got communication from the state that their Alliance program was just approved within the last three days or five days. So they are still working, they didn't even have the ability to spend the money, because they hadn't had approval of the Alliance program that they solicited the state with. So if they need money, they will get money. If I have it, within a week's time or so, they get the money allocated to them. I don't hold their money. It all gets transferred electronically to their accounts, and I will work with them on getting whatever it is. I'm not sure what you're hearing, that they don't have money, but we're working with them very diligently. In fact, they're submitting vouchers to us, and we're transferring that money sometimes within a day or two, because they're, hey, I need this money, I have to have it right away. So we're working with them, and the flow of cash from the city to the Board of Ed has never been better than it is today. Five years ago, the check for the Board of Ed used to sit in a drawer, until they came over, one at a time they would be given. Right now, we transfer electronically, they submit electronically, everything is going...
Right now, we transfer electronically. They submit electronically. Everything is going much, much, much quicker. And I'm really telling you, I will not hold their money for any reason if it is designated as theirs. If I have questions, I will wait till I have definitive answers, either from the state or from the Board of Education.
And how long ago were we made aware of $1.8 million Alliance Grant Fund?
That came through from the state that they were allocated 1.4 for Alliance and 480 for Priority School District. But that funding didn't come to me at that point in time.
Okay.
That money comes through in the same kind of a cycle. ECS comes in a quarter in November, a quarter in March, or February, and fifty percent in May. The same thing with Alliance Grants. They come through EFT, to our EFT account, and those EFTs are analyzed at least once a week, if not more, and distributed to either school lunch program, or the city grant line, or Board of Ed grant line item, or wherever they need to go. The monies are distributed to proper accounts and people are notified.
Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Bashara.
Ms. O'Malley, yes.
I just want to add that the Board of Ed does have tablets, and they did that in an effort to save money as well. They were, you know, thinking along the same lines. So the Board of Ed members do have tablets.
Thank you. Any other new business? We need a motion for the head count.
He made a motion. Somebody said he did it, but he didn't...
Oh, we didn't... Okay, so all in favor of that motion for 14 tablets? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Executive session. Mr. Marine, Mr. Cassetti?
Oh, I was gonna just say, I make a motion after the executive session.
Any second. Mr. Delibro. Okay. Mr. Marine, who would you like to stay for executive session?
For executive session, Rich Bashara, Sheila O'Malley, Mayor, myself. No other members.
Ten minute break?
Yeah, break to grab some materials for...
Ten minute break, Chief Hale.